I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Hamel, here. Commissioner Heady.
Here.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Here.
Chair Dunston.
Here. All right, any reordering of the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, let's see, I don't think I'm looking at the wrong one here. Any presentations?
No, sir.
Okay. Approval of events from the planning commission meeting of August 3rd, 2017.
Motion approved. Paul Second.
I will, I wasn't here, so I will not vote.
Just call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Public comments? Nothing. Okay. Consent calendar? None. Continued public hearings? None. New public hearings. Resolution number seventeen dash eleven, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Beelton, California, recommending approval of a mitigated negative declaration, seventeen MND zero two, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Avenue of the Flag specific plan and making related findings under the California Environmental Equality Act, and resolution number seventeen dash twelve, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Beelton, California, recommending approval of the Avenue of Flags specific plan, seventeen SP zero one, and making findings in support thereof.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I am subbing for Irma, who's in Spain right now, walking the pilgrim trail. She's very disappointed not to have able to give the presentation at the last meeting. She was all ready for it, so I'm subbing, but all of this is their work, and I'm going to present it, and I think they did a really excellent job on it, so. The goal of our specific plan is to create a vibrant downtown core with a thriving mix of land uses and public activity. The vision statement from the avenue was to create a vibrant downtown centered on the Avenue of Flags, and we wanted a central plaza, refined traffic patterns, ample parking, walking paths, to be a signature destination for the community and tourists that come to Beelton. So why do a specific plan? Well, the vision plan, that was one of the documents to implement the vision. It's an appropriate regulatory tool to implement the vision. It establishes a link between the general plan and future development. It considers land use, circulation, urban design, development standards, and economics, and creates a realistic and achievable way to encourage development consistent with the vision. It targets specific areas for development and is based on sound economic principles. A specific plan has the power of zoning and can establish other types of regulatory tools, such as the form-based code. It addresses infrastructure, circulation, and parking needs for this particular area. The environmental review makes future development easier, as you can tear environmental documents off the master document that we have prepared. It provides economic incentives, such as the Development Opportunity Reserve, for developers to partner with the city to implement the vision, and it pays the way for private sector investment and corresponding fiscal impacts and economic benefits to the city. So, we've had several workshops and meetings on the plan, and at the last city council meeting, we did get direction to complete the plan with certain changes, and we're going to go over those changes with you right now, and what the council directed on the plan. For median two, which is the median across from the Vintage Walk project, instead of showing buildings on this, we've moved all the buildings to a separate section that people can take and put wherever they want into the plan, so it's, we really didn't show them now in the specific medians. Right now, we have flex space for diagonal parking in events areas, planning for cobblestone paved surface with rolled curb, trees and shrubbery, and movable containers, post holes for removable shade structures, and infrastructure stub outs for fiber optics. That's kind of the main change to median two, from what you've been seeing over the last couple of years.
Will there be any stub outs for other types of plumbing, electrical?
Oh, yes. Fiber optics was added because we didn't have that. There's already water and sewer throughout that area, so, yeah, but the fiber optics, we wanted to make sure we put some conduits in if that ever comes through.
Thank you.
On median three, which is the primary focus of the downtown area at Second Street, we're going to have, still showing a town plaza and amphitheater. Those are still things we wanted to show as improvements on this median, along with grassy areas, trees, and shade in between, along with a public restroom building. Still think this is the appropriate location for that. And again, infrastructure stub outs. So these, not as many changes to this median from what you've seen before. We've taken out kind of like the small commercial spaces, but left the restrooms and the amphitheater and the town center. Median four, which moves to the south of Second Street, flex space, again, as part of the initial plan, and basically will stay kind of where, what it is now with the walking paths and the landscaping at this point. We'll have diagonal parking added, and this is an area we still envision for artisan and food vendor areas at some point in the future. The flag areas to the north and south would remain, and again, we would have infrastructure stub outs and fiber optics. So those are the main changes to the three medians. The other two medians would stay relatively the same. The number of crosswalks were looked at, and determined that the ones shown in the plan are adequate and best suited to promote pedestrian safety. The mid-block crosswalks would be tabled, so there would be a little rise, so when cars went over them, they would have to slow down as they traverse those crosswalks, as a traffic calming and safety measure. We'll have multi-way stop signs at the Avenue of Flags at Demasa, Second Street, and First Street, that will further slow the traffic through the area. We will have class-two bike lanes where safe, sharos in other areas, and we have transit stops existing at Avenue Flags and Second Street, and we have park and ride to the north and south of the specific plan. The one in the north is still proposed through Caltrans, but that is, we'll be moving forward through the process. So this is, shows a little bit of the circulation and transit. Again, the park and ride would be up in this area, proposed, and then we have one at the south end existing. And the other traffic, transit stuff is located here, next to the Tonius Restaurant.
Where would the park and ride be on the north side?
They would be up towards the vacant area between Haneda and the freeway. It's a Caltrans property that will be, we've worked on the plans, it's just not a high priority for them at this point.
Is that the one right up against the actual off-ramp?
Yes, that is correct. So we've eliminated proposed diagonal parking on the business frontage sides of the Avenue of Flags. That was a direction from the city council. They wanted to see diagonal parking instead of the parallel parking on that part. The diagonal would still be on the opposite side of the street, and parallel parking would be shown in locations where it is safe and spaces available. With these reconfigurations, we have one hundred and eighty-five spaces. With the reconfiguration, it's one hundred and forty-two additional for three hundred and twenty-seven proposed public spaces. And that does not include, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrea, twenty-three spaces in front of Vintage Walk, and the twenty-six spaces in front of the west, the businesses on the west side where Mother Hubbard's is. Those would remain as dedicated for those two projects, as currently designed. The businesses along Mother Hubbard's area wanted to keep the angled parking and not get rid of the median, because they felt that parking was very important to their businesses. At some point in the future, that can be changed, but at this point, it's remaining as currently configured. So this is a revised parking map, and we're still proposing large vehicle parking up on median one, so there's parallel spaces in kind of the travelers' district, so we still have that proposed. We still have opportunities to work with other property owners for larger parking off-site in the particular different areas, such as at P-Soup Anderson's, and that'll be long-term, and we've had conversations with them in the past, and we would consider, continue to do that. After many revisions and looks at architecture, we've, are proposing three types of architecture for the Avenue of Flags. The agrarian, which matches our historical farming background. Craftsman bungalow, which does reflect in some of the businesses currently on the avenue, and then art modern and fifties diner is encouraged in districts one, three, four, and six. And this came out of discussions with the chamber about having some type of identity for the city. You have Solvang with its Danish architecture, Western with Los Alamos and Santiness. So instead of just having run-of-the-mill architecture, have something that Beelton can be known for, that showcases our agrarian and service town and car elements. It wouldn't be all the buildings, and it wouldn't be flashy neon silver types of things. I don't know if you're familiar with the Coca-Cola building in Santa Maria. It's, has a lot of glass block associated with it, and that, that's the kind of architecture that art modern would be associated with.
And why would we go with multiple as opposed to choosing one, Mark?
We'd, because we, we have multiples there right now that aren't going to change, and we would like to have a little differentiation, you know, try to address all of our different types of routes with the architecture, and I think they can be complementary. And if you have one, it's kind of gets monotonous.
I don't know, Solvang's a pretty cute town with all the Danish look.
Well, that's up to the commission may recommend to pick one of the styles and move forward with that, but staff felt that these three styles would more integrate with what's out there, and get a variety of things, and touch on the little different histories of Beelton.
Okay, thank you.
Again, the agrarian is up, it's the first line. The craftsman bungalow is in the middle, and the art modern fifties diner is below. And we envision that there's fifties diner, art modern, there's going to be all the buildings out there, but it may be applicable for certain properties along the avenue.
And would we have control over those properties that would, I'm just trying to foresee, you know, an agrarian right next to a fifty diner?
Yes.
Like a next door.
Development plan will come before the commission, and we'll have the usual process of preliminary review, et cetera, and staff would take a look at it as well. But yes, you would have control over that.
Okay, I have that same thought. I just can't visualize it.
And if you could use your microphone a little more, because we've had public can't hear over the TV when you're not using the microphone. Okay, thank you. So in phase one, we'd be looking at traffic calming and safety improvements, such as sidewalk construction on the Avenue of Flags, water and sewer, and infrastructure upgrades, the aforementioned fiber optic stub outs, funding mechanisms for the safety measures, infrastructure, and civic improvements, and identify public parking areas and investigate parking districts. For medians one and two to the north, we would start talking with Caltrans on possible improvements to the off-ramp, which could include a roundabout, doesn't have to, but we need to look at that and see what the available options are. At this point, when this is implemented, it would stay as currently designed, but we'd start talking with Caltrans on what our opportunities are for that intersection. On median two, we'd look at construction in the flex space for parking and events, including the container landscaping and post holes for possible shade structures. For medians one, three, and five, plan and design potential improvements, identify funding sources, and we would get help from Valley Gardner for layout, and possibly the Civilian Conservation Corps for installation and others as applicable. Phase two would be median three, would be programming and design, try to acquire funding between the city and private investment. Construct median three improvements and frontage, including site work and grading, and installation of the town plaza, restrooms, and bandstand in the grassy areas, trees and shade. Median four would be the interim improvements, such as the flex space. So the current improvements, the new sidewalk that we installed, plus the landscaping, that would all stay until we moved into a different phase and wanted to do something with that particular median. We would like to complete the multipurpose trail along Zaca Creek, creek north to Demasa Road and south through P-Soup Anderson's to State Route two forty-six, and we have funding in the capital improvement budget for trail construction, but we're hoping we partner with developers as well as they come forward. Phase three, acquire funding for median one, install drought tolerant landscaping, the truck and RV spaces along the west side, and passenger spaces along the east side. Median four, continue to look at concepts and funding for improvements to that median, and then if median five, the one closest to two forty-six, if we needed any improvements there to identify the funding, but that will be one of the further down improvement priorities. In concurrent and future, again, we'd be looking at the southbound off-ramp improvements to see what we can do in that location. State Route two forty-six has been upgraded. I don't think we'll have much more that we need to do in that particular area. Off-site parking, including potential city parking lots, secondary circulation and access, and projects resulting from the Development Opportunity Reserve incentives in public-private sector partnerships. And with that, I'm going to turn over economics to Joe Diegas from Cosmont Companies to go over the economic section of the specific plan, which is a little, little more in-depth and specific than most specific plans have as far as economic development.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, commissioners. Good to see you all again.
Let me try to get a hold of this.
Advancing is just these episodes?
I'll do, I can do that. The bottom button right here is working the advanced.
Again, Joe Diegas, Cosmont Companies. Our contribution on the specific plan has largely been financing and economics. I'll talk, I'm going to really review some of these things, because it's been a while, honestly, and I will point out changes. There are not many. Financing, financing sources and uses, or funding sources and uses. The whole idea is we're identifying buckets to pull from. Those are our sources, and we're aligning them with where we would use them, the potential uses. There are three rows on this table. Top row is associated with all these bullet points in that first row, which are all essentially different types of infrastructure, and I'll review these in a bit more detail. So all the sources in this first row are associated with infrastructure type uses. There's a second, smaller row in there, which are some repetition of sources above, but the use is different. The use is not just infrastructure focused. The use is helping private projects to be financially feasible, resolving financial feasibility gaps. The third smallest row, where you see SBA loans, that's really not a bucket that a city is pulling from. That is really for businesses looking to locate or expand within Beelton, and just pointing out a resource in SBA loans that is available to them, that we want to make sure they're aware of. So not much has changed on this graphic as we've moved through time. One important change relates to property tax mechanisms. I'll point that out. What you don't see on this table, which I'll talk about in a bit more detail on the following slide, is a resource called Melrose Community Facilities District. It's essentially an additional tax on a parcel with a use for infrastructure. In previous conversations with at least the planning commission level, we didn't want to talk about additional parcels, parcel taxes, special taxes on parcels, so we've eliminated the CFD, and I'll go into it a little bit more in the following slide. All these other sources have remained. I'll do a very quick recap. Development impact fees, city already has some impact fees. These are typical charges to development for things like mitigation of traffic, mitigation of, you know, and paying for road improvements and things like that. Transportation type impact fees also paid for things like signs and signalization and things like that. Park impact fees is another one that's very common. These are fees charged to developers to support park space and open space within cities. Those are common. And it's a resource for the city, and having those programs to actually spend those monies on these corresponding uses, transportation-related, parks-related, as examples. Developer contributions via DOR. This DOR program is another high-level recap, was a big part of why we went after the specific plan in the first place. The idea was to program somehow into a specific plan, a way to incentivize private development, and we did that by reserving sort of bonuses that we can offer developers, but only if they provided us something in return, and I'm going to actually spend a couple slides on that in a minute. But that's what I'm referring to with DOR, Development Opportunity Reserve. Parking district revenues from participating businesses. Parking districts are common in California. These are boundaries drawn typically around businesses that benefit from common parking. Solvang uses it, other cities use it. The idea is there are revenues charged, most typically kind of tagged onto business license fees, and it gives businesses ability to use common parking. So the funding sources, fees charged to businesses to be able to use common parking. Lease revenues from private businesses operating on the median. We have a unique opportunity here in Beelton, employing the medians. What we've discussed in the past is the ability for private businesses to potentially use the space itself or structures that we build on the median to operate businesses on a temporary and permanent basis. Those lease revenues offer an opportunity to the city to apply those lease revenues as a resource for different types of infrastructure, as an example. EIFD property tax increment. We could spend a lot of time here. What I'll save for now, and please hit me with questions on any of these. EIFD is kind of the new replacement for what used to be redevelopment agencies in California. It's property tax increment. The idea being, as new assessed value generates within an area, or as new development happens, assessed value of property increases. Assessed value increases generate more property tax revenues to any entity that receives property tax, city, county, school districts, water districts, all those entities that receive property tax. The EIFD is a mechanism for those entities to contribute some of those increased revenues into a special purpose entity. That is what the EIFD is, and that special purpose entity's purpose is infrastructure. So Beelton has an opportunity to invest its own property tax. We can also pool revenues from the county and other taxing entities, so long as they consent, to help fund this infrastructure, which we know will be catalytic to future private development. Grant sources are always part of our equation. It's always our goal to use, quite frankly, other people's money to the best extent that we can. There are constantly new programs coming up. A couple examples, SB one, this gas tax thing, this was approved at the state level via Senate Bill one. What it spells out for Beelton is, revenue starts flowing as soon as November twenty seventeen. I'd say first stabilized revenue was fiscal year eighteen nineteen. That's another eighty-four thousand dollars annually to Beelton for transportation type infrastructures, eligible transportation type infrastructures. Other sources are always, EDA has public works assistance, other sorts of grants, CDBG, Community Development Block grants. That's a resource that the city has actually already used in the past, but we continue to keep it on our radar. One that actually has importance was just announced about a week and a half ago. It's a federal program for federal highways, which one-on-one is, by the way. It's a good story just being that one-on-one is one of the oldest actually in the state. We think we'd actually have good eligibility for this. It's called the Department of Transportation, DOT INFRA, I-N-F-R-A, and I can't actually remember what it stands for, but it has high priority for national highway system, such as the one-on-one, and things like bridges, overpasses, on-ramps, off-ramps, and this is brand new, we haven't even talked about this yet, but the goal that I'm trying to portray here is we always keep our eyes on grant sources, because it's other people's money, and we should take advantage of that. Last point here in the first row is general fund via SSTR. Concept here being that new development on the avenue generates new tax revenues for the city. It is the city's choice, if it so chooses, to direct some of those funds, such as new sales tax, or TOT, or otherwise, to actually reinvest in infrastructure. It's an option available to the city. All of those, again, I relate to the first row of potential uses, different types of infrastructure. The second row, again, incentivizing private projects, helping them to become financially feasible. Some of these are repeats, the DOR program, those site-specific tax revenues, that's SSTR, site-specific tax revenues, and grant sources. Those are, again, options, not only for infrastructure, but also for resolution of financial feasibility gaps. And then the last row, I think, is more straightforward. This idea of making sure businesses looking to locate or expand within the city.
So you don't have that working, so I'll do it for you.
Oh, thank you. I told you I'd spend, it's a little bit more time. We eliminated CFD, Community Facilities District, from the menu, because we heard this commission, I can't remember if it was council, too.
It was actually the city council said they didn't want tax, so they, it might have been the commission as well, but I think we got direction for that.
Yep, so I heard you loud and clear, and removed it. Conversation had been in the past, why not also remove EIFD? The reason why I didn't remove it, or we don't think it should be removed, is because it's not an additional tax on a property owner. Property tax increment financing works a little bit differently, where it's, again, those entities that receive property tax choosing to dedicate those revenues. It's not more money coming into the coffers, it's those people receiving the money deciding to invest some of that money from their coffers into specific uses, emphasis on infrastructure. What else do I want to say here? Other benefits to EIFD, I kind of don't want to drill this too much, but please stop me and ask me any questions if you want to spend more time on it, but it's an increasingly popular tool in California, following the dissolution of redevelopment agencies.
So, now that we're on EIFD, and I wasn't at the city council meeting, so I didn't get to hear exactly what was said. I hear loud and clear, we don't want more tax, especially for the residents. Was the council concerned about utilizing tax dollars that are currently flowing in to be allocated to a project? Was there any concern around that?
No, we really didn't delve into that. They were not too, they, they thought the EIFD was a tax, and, but that's why we've presented it with this information, that it is not a tax, and they have to participate, so it's not a tax like the Community Facilities District would be.
Okay.
What incentive, Mark, would another agency have to investing in the, in the specific plan here and in the avenue?
Perfect question. That's the pitch we have to make to them. The case to be made is for regionally, the most strong case I would say is regionally beneficial infrastructure. The idea being that if we were to improve, let's say, an off-ramp coming off of one-on-one, that not only the city would benefit, but potentially anyone. that not only the city would benefit, but potentially anyone coming through the area might benefit. Or if there is, I don't know, improvements in our roads would somehow reduce the load on other roads within the county, that would be an incentive for them. Those are kind of more qualitative type arguments. We like to focus as like economists on the financial side of things. The idea being you invest a little and you get a return. So base case is, let's use the county as an example, they don't contribute anything to the EIFD. We would make the case that without your money, we can do less. We can install less catalytic infrastructure. We can, we're less able to improve our roads and the potential for new private development to come in is thus decreased. So we would make a financial case to them that shows them, all right, base case, you don't invest in the EIFD. This is the sort of private development that we project over the next 10, 20 years. And this is what that results to you in terms of your property tax revenue. So that's their base case. We would then show them a scenario where they invest 25, 50% of their incremental property tax from new development. And what we would show them is with that revenue committed, we would then be able to improve our medians with certain types of uses that will, let's say, will increase our parking, which directly increases the ability of private development to occur because there's more parking available for their use. So we would show them in that second scenario, a realistic greater level of private development, a greater level of assessed value and the property tax increment that would then flow back to them as a result of that. And it's pretty interesting to see how with, you know, may invest 25, 50% of their funds, the amount that's not invested that comes back to them, it can outweigh their base case scenario by a factor of 10 or more. So the idea being, help us make more happen. And you'll get a great, and you'll get a greater return on your money than if you do nothing.
And we're keeping it in as an option because if we don't, you know, we may not be able to take advantage of it, but it's there, it may be able to be taken advantage of. But if we didn't have it there, it might not be an option in the future.
It sounds, sounds great, theory wise. I'm not an economist, so I mean, I'm going by your experience. It'd be interesting to see a case study.
Oh, yeah.
I think we can put that together right now, but it'd be interesting to see it.
Oh, yeah. I mean, right, spend more time online or offline, but like, where in these conversations concurrent right now, earlier today on my way up, City of Rialto, San Bernardino County, we're basically negotiating this project list, what we're going to use the money from, from this EIFD to make it palatable for the county. We've made our financial case, they bought it. They liked it. They've got some, they've got people on their community CAO office, county administrative office level, who understand the finance of it, and they get the return. Now what we're whittling down is this project list. We've got more projects than we have money to spend on, so we're prioritizing it for those infrastructure improvements that will be most catalytic for future development. In that case, it's some flood control basins and related improvements, and it's two interchanges along the 210 freeway. And everyone kind of agrees, we can just get these things done, we're going to unlock development for, in that case, a lot of industrial retail and residential development. Like, it's so, I mean, it's so case specific. Rialto is going to be different from Buellton, Buellton's going to be different from the other 26 that we're working on. It's, all of these are so case by case.
Of course.
Could I actually go a little bit out of order? Can I go to the next one and then back to?
Yes, sure.
So, thanks.
Good idea.
The DOR program, I just wanted to talk a little bit about this, as a refresher at the very least. The whole idea is we're trying to program into our specific plan, a way to incentivize new development with zoning. The way we do that, we don't just upzone. We don't just say, all right, you can build whatever you want in this area, because then we have no, we have no carrots to offer in that case. So what we start with is a baseline, kind of our baseline level of acceptability for planning. That's what the baseline of the specific plan represents. Then we have these, I'm actually going to start on the right side, these incentives, the potential incentives that we can offer, such as increased building heights, reduced onsite parking, or increased residential density, above and beyond our baseline. But we're not just going to give it away, developer has to earn it in a sense. And the way they earn it is by providing us something from the left side of the ledger, which we've identified as, of course, with the cities, in collaboration with the city, the community benefits or priority objectives that we want in our community, specifically on the avenue. Things like even funding or construction of restrooms, public parking continually comes up, the creation of or just payment into a parking district, all sorts of off-site public infrastructure, roadway, sidewalk, streets, all of these. Other options include payment of different sorts of fees that would be beneficial for the city. So the whole idea is we make available to a developer the opportunity to develop with a greater level of intensity on their parcels, which spells, as far as they're concerned, a greater level of profitability. So they want to go after that, but instead of just giving it away with increased zoning, we're saying, give us something in return, which is very meaningful to our community. That's why we've prioritized this list. That is the concept behind the DOR program. I wanted to use a couple of examples on the previous slide to just maybe beat it to death. Three scenarios, A, B, and C. Developer A project. Here's a scenario where we're going to offer developer a reduction in their onsite parking requirement, so they have to put less spaces or stalls on their site. In return, it makes perfect sense, we are asking them to help build, fund, or construct off-site public parking, which will benefit on their own project, but other projects on the avenue, which we're all trying to support. That's developer A project. Developer B project, we're offering a, let's say it's a residential or mixed-use development, the opportunity to increase their dwelling units per acre. We're not just going to give that away, we're going to ask them to give us some public restrooms somewhere on the avenue. These are just examples again. Developer C project, an increase in building height. In return, they're giving us or paying for some sort of off-site public improvements, again curb, gutter, streets, signs, signalization, park space. The whole idea is we want to give them something that we know is financially meaningful for them, increasing profitability, and we get something in return based on what's important to us. So what is, why are we kind of doing all this, other than just to make the city look nicer or better? Well, there's a financial return, that's part of what we've been asked to focus on. So a non-incentivized land use scenario, what we call a baseline buildout, could be around 220,000 square feet of commercial space, 163 residential dwelling units within the area. What that spells out, what that translates into, into primary revenue sources, is a little less than 100,000 per year in property tax. When we look at that on a pro forma basis, 30 years into the future, it's about 1.65 million on a present value basis, discounted cash flow, for those who are familiar, just accounting for the time value of money. If you just add it up year by year, it's 3.9 million. We take present values because the idea is a dollar today is worth more than a dollar 30 years from now. Sales tax is greater. Sales tax translates into about 667,000 per year, present value basis over 30 years, 12.83 million. Employment, 556 employees. These are just kind of primary items. We've got a separate bullet point here that is, talks about EIFD. I'm afraid to spend too much more time on this. It's on this slide just because it's property tax related. The idea is if we decided that we would want to invest some portion of that property tax growth, that's the bucket that we're pulling from at the city level. We would be investing some of that 96,000 per year, infusing it into this EIFD, but we likely wouldn't be doing that unless that commitment is drawing other people to partner in with us. Again, ability to use other people's money, a county, a water district, someone else that receives property tax. The idea is if you package a tool like that, you have some serious funding capacity when you look the long term. These are at least 45-year districts. So these are ways to generate your financings, 3 million or more, depending on the amount of funding contributed to it. And so I offer a couple of notes on this whole fiscal and economic impact analysis. That was baseline, we call it quote unquote baseline. To the extent we do offer incentives, allow someone to build a greater level of intensity in terms of dwelling units per acre or commercial square footage, those would increase these benefits, property tax, sales tax, other sources, above this baseline that we've evaluated. Second bullet point, we just called out because it's somewhat easier to conceptualize property tax and sales tax. That new development actually translates into a bunch of other revenue sources as well. We just didn't do a full-on, in-depth fiscal impact analysis. But there are other revenue sources, property tax, a little MBLF, franchise fees, charges for utility services. There are other revenues that would increase as a result of that new development. We just wanted to focus on a couple of them for illustration. All of those that I just described, including that bullet point, are what we would call direct revenues. Those numbers do not reflect what economists call off-site indirect or induced economic impacts. The idea is if you introduce new residents onto the avenue, let's just say in the residential components of new projects, what you're also bringing in is new income into the community, which can be spent on existing businesses within the county, your Albertsons, your CVS, your restaurants, the crossroads. The idea is it's not just the direct benefit, but there's indirect to other existing businesses within the area. I think that captures it. It's also ground for questions.
I think that takes care of the economics unless you, but Joe will be here to answer any further questions, or we can do more right now.
One thing on the last couple of slides, what you're talking about were the actual numbers. We didn't bring up anything around grants, but it sounded like what you just said, and there is a good potential for some of these newer grants, the ability for us to utilize those. Do we want to bring that into the thought process?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, so SB one was the gas tax thing. That's, that's coming to the city no matter what. It's just a responsibility of, we could help if finance wants. The idea is you need to come up with your eligible project list. It's going to come down from the state in the amount of about 84,000 a year. But in order to get that on an annual basis, we've got to submit to this.
Which we have already done. We have, we have basically street projects within the city, so that would include the avenue.
That's what I example. This other one of, I mentioned this DOT INFRA, that's the federal highway one. They have kind of two installments, 5 million for small projects, 25 million for large projects. We likely follow the small projects. That's a, you know, a grant application process. Again, everyone just found out about it a week and a half ago, so we've not even gotten a chance to talk to the city about it. But it happens to be my opinion, it happens to be my opinion that yes, that is absolutely something we should be going after.
Excellent. Okay. So the possibility that we'll get some financial support potentially that way as well.
It's my opinion.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
All right, I will continue on. We did do an initial study, mitigated negative declaration, a programmatic document that we circulated for a 30-day public review and comment period. We received two comment letters, actually received more, but the first ones we received were from Sunny Valley Transit, which the city of Solvang, in bus stop locations, and we have addressed those. The Native American Heritage Commission regarding consultation with the tribe. And we have provided the tribe the appropriate documents and talked to them about this and have the appropriate mitigation measures in regarding tribal cultural resources. We have additional comment letters, one from Air Pollution Control District regarding the Clean Air Plan and the location of an assessment of risks to sensitive receptors. Our air quality consultant, Ringcon consultant, states that the analysis is consistent with the 2013 Clean Air Plan and the 2016 OZO Plan, so we are complying with the appropriate documents. And the specific plan does not change or add new sensitive uses to the project area, so no additional mitigation is required. The city is going beyond technical compliance with SEQA to ensure public health is protected, and Ringcon states that the HRA is the most appropriate to currently available to assess potential health hazards, so we feel the document addresses those concerns. We did receive a comment letter from Caltrans, and they really haven't provided any documentation or evidence to support their conclusions. It's basically a conclusionary report, and our city traffic consultant took a look at their comments and feels that our traffic analysis is adequate for analyzing the trips for the project. I mean, we could have spent a lot more money to go into detail that may or may not occur. So we feel the traffic analysis that we have prepared is a reasonable case analysis, and when projects come in, we may have to do additional traffic studies. But to anticipate what those may be would just be spending extra money at this time that may or may not occur. So feel the traffic analysis is adequate in the environmental document.
Mark, I have a couple of questions on that. You know, reading through, through both the answer and the letter from Caltrans. I remember long ago, the goal was, okay, it's going to be 15 miles an hour down the avenue with flags. Now I see it, you want to bring it down to 25 with traffic calming devices, you know, three new stop signs as you go down. I think that's going to drive more than either one imagines over to Central Avenue. I think they're going to, you know, I think Central's going to see a lot more traffic than it is envisioned. And I don't think, I think we need to find some, because those residents have to deal with Second Street being used as a freeway, essentially from people dropping off their kids at Haneda. And now, now you're going to send more cars down, and I know the numbers, and it looked like an extra five cars per day. I think it's being, if you're coming and you have to go stop sign, stop sign, another stop sign, people back diagonally packing, backing out in the traffic, it's going, on some, some days, that's going to be a very slow go, so you're just going to go over to Central Avenue. And I just really worry about that, of the quality of life for those people on Central.
And that could occur even if we didn't have the specific plan with development on the avenue, there would be more development occurring. Hopefully, long-term, we're looking at that particular intersection, so as development occurs and we get these improvements through, that hopefully we will can work with Caltrans as appropriate exiting, so they can't go to the Central Avenue. But that's a longer-term look at things, and maybe Rose wants to chip in on this as well.
I think Mark has adequately conveyed that. It's something that we're going to have to look at and monitor, and it's hard to determine at this point. It's going to be, people are going to try to find the least inconvenience for them until development occurs, you know.
It's half the reason, or pretty much the reason that we don't extend, what is it? What's the one by the, on the Thumbelina? What's that road?
Uh, Goldenora?
Yeah, I don't think they say that word anymore, so.
Yeah.
Well, I just, you know, you're right, people are going, human nature is going to say, I'm not going to go through stop signs and people backing up, I'm just going to go to Central Avenue. You know, I, that's my one big worry with all this going on there.
It's going to take the avenue exit, take the next exit, just go across on 246.
Yeah, but then that's just going to congest, make that more congested. I mean, if you're trying to get to, say, the Riverview Park, you're probably going to go through neighborhoods now on there. And so that's, that's my fear on all this.
It is a concern, and it's something we, we take seriously and something we'll look at as, as we move forward when development projects come in. We could, again, as I mentioned, have additional traffic studies. So let's say a couple of projects come in and we start noticing there's, there's issues, and the third project comes in, maybe we do a further, more detailed traffic study at that time to determine the options.
I just wonder about why the three stop signs.
That's traffic calming to, so people aren't flying down the avenue and make it a little more pedestrian safe. If you want to look at options of not doing the four-way stops at certain intersections, but that may just allow the traffic more of a free flow through the area.
I seem to remember one meeting that we had, we were talking about with the streets, with the angled parking, it narrowed the street, which with the reduced speed limit, just people inherently would start to slow down in that type of environment. And I wonder if the stop signs are an overkill on top of that. I'm just questioning.
I'll let Rose and Kent maybe weigh in on that. They did more research on, on that.
Thanks.
Right, there's, we can do any multitude of, of traffic calming measures. At times, this was the direction, try to put as much as we can possible, because we want the traffic slowed and to have an increased walkability for pedestrians, and so that would be stopping vehicles periodically throughout that little corridor. So, you know, again, there's competing things. Do you want, you want traffic through, you want people to stop, you want, you know, to, pedestrians to walk through, you want people to come and, and slow down and look at, look at the offerings that are there, you know, would potentially be there. It's, it's a matter of juggling which priorities you want to get them. You want them out faster, it's, you're going to lose some of the other objectives.
How did we get to 25 miles an hour on the, on the avenue?
Right now, avenue is not 25 miles per hour.
I think that's the, that's the proposed.
Proposed. Oh, right. I think it was. I think it was just, I, I don't remember a particular reason for the 25.
The 25 was used, that was mainly the goal of everyone to have traffic slowed down in that area, because we want people to stop there, we want people to shop there, we want people to stay there, spend their money, see a park, go in and hang out with their families.
Sure.
Go to a restaurant. So having everyone slower with that much traffic, we're, you know, we're thinking that there's going to be people walking down the streets, walking in the medians, we want traffic to be 25.
Well, I'm actually saying, what about slower?
Uh, slower is very hard to do. It's very hard to do.
Because it'd be, if you have three stop signs, it's going to be hard to get 25 miles an hour.
Yes, yeah, so, but if you, if you tell people that we're going to make it 15, people will be very upset that it's 15. But if you say 25, and then we have stop signs and table crosswalks, it will slow the traffic down.
Potentially, like in some areas, I know they have, you know, maybe that's, that's not a stop sign, but you know, if the flash, like the pedestrian walk flashing area comes up, and you see the flashing lights and everything come up, then you, those are stop signs.
And that's also, that's the goal, for it to be posted certain, you know, speed limit, we have to make sure that it's a traffic study, a speed survey supports that. So, again, that's the goal, you know, we, we can drop it to, that we think may be reasonable, because that's the, the residential neighborhood, as far as speed limits, typically it's 35 in a business area, so if that's the goal, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what's going to be posted, because we have to have a speed survey that supports that.
Okay.
You know, one thing, you know, beat Central Avenue to death here, but I think as we go towards this and we start doing improvements, I think we need to do a, a county average number of daily trips down to Central Avenue, and then see how it's effective once you put in the three stop signs and nothing, the speed, whatever you want to call them, and then, then see, okay, now, we thought it was only going to increase by five trips a day, well, when it starts increasing by 25 a day, I think we need to say, whoa, on that. So I think you need some baseline, and so hopefully that's done.
Yeah, we can do that as part of our traffic count.
Well, we've already completed a baseline as part of this initial.
Coming down Central?
Yes.
Okay, great, so now you have a baseline.
Yes.
Okay. Good to hear it.
So, the next steps, can we, looking for comments and potential revisions from the planning commission tonight, and then we prepare a final draft that will go before the city council, hopefully, if you take action tonight on the October 12th city council meeting in public hearing. So we're recommending that we need two separate motions, adopting Resolution 1711 with the environmental document, and Resolution 1712 recommending approval of the specific plan. That concludes staff's presentation, and you probably don't need to limit three minutes tonight, unless you feel it's necessary, but I think it's more important to get the comments from the people in the audience, and give them enough time to ask questions, and so.
Absolutely, absolutely agree. Before we jump into public comments, any final, or additional questions for staff from the commission? I think we've been asking them as we go. Okay, let's go ahead and start with public comments.
Open to public hearing.
Okay, open to public hearing. Peggy Brar, too.
Thank you. Good evening, commission and staff. I really appreciate the, the conversation that we just had, because I had a lot of those questions myself, so I don't have to go there. I think, I think there will be some adjustment even on the stop signs, I'm happy with them, but in the table to crosswalks, I think are great. How many of those go in, it looks like that's, can be discussed later, too, so happy with that. Overall, I approve, I'm going to start with first parking. Overall, I approve the parking configuration, which does support the bike and pedestrian safety. However, there is a one area of concern that I've got on Median 2 in front of Vintage Walk. They had diagonal parking on the west side of that median. Due to the diagonal parking already, that's placed at Vintage Walk, you're going to have back-to-back diagonal parking, and to me, that's a problem. The proximity to Demasas intersection compounds the problem. You know, you're going to have the maneuvering that could very well possibly cause even more congestion at that intersection of Demasas and the avenue. So I would recommend that that change to parallel parking along the west side of that second median alongside facing Vintage Walk. I gave you a packet of my comments, there's a picture there showing my little drawing. This plan will be challenged by recent decisions by the council. They, they're going to use that corner lot at Second and Central, it appears, for a mixed use, and not a parking lot. At least, that's what I got.
Let me clarify, we were looking at a mixed use, a residential in a parking lot. There's no decision on one or the other, we're going to look at the pros and cons and the economics of all of those, so there's no decision.
Thank you on that. I had talked to Councilman Andresic, and he had said that they were going with the mixed use, so I appreciate the fact that the parking lot is still available, because I think it's essential to.
Yeah, absolutely, it's still, still part of the project, the analysis.
Great. Okay, now, I'm pleased the plan is showing a roundabout at the 101. I think that Caltrans, if it approves it, you know, they'll, they'll let it be if it's the best thing for that area, and if we can afford it, maybe with some of these grants and something that happened. I think the option also needs to stay open for Demasas intersection, when, in the negative declaration, it declares that, it says that Demasas overpass will need to be widened. And so during that time, possibly would be the time to look at adding a roundabout during that discussion. At that point, we will have congestion at Demasas and, and the Avenue of Flags, I mean, things will have been moved along by then. And ideally, it wouldn't it be wonderful if, in a perfect world, that the discussion to have on a new over ramp built just north of Demasas, so that we can use the old Demasas over ramp for pedestrian and bike lane, so crossing, we wouldn't have to build that, we'd just build a new on and off ramp just above Demasas. So, I don't know, that, that would be something I would think would be fun to investigate. Architectural styles, you hit on a little bit that earlier. The statement is definitely not true that, you know, the specific plan design styles are, they're not based on the community vision, whether you change it to art, whatever that was, or Art Deco, when 50's diner was definitely not supported by the, by the city, by the community visioning process. What was supported was traditional. Now, styles presently on the avenue which no longer are allowed are Mission, Danish, and Western. They're not going anywhere, they're staying. We have Craftsman Bungalow and Agrarian. And traditional land, traditional architecture is the one, is the thread that can bind, it can be the, the unifier of these all these styles. You're going to add Art Deco and 50's diner, you will end up with hodgepodge. You, you, your downtown's very short, you're not talking a 10-block area, you know, and so I, that's just too much, and it was definitely not supported by the, by the community. In our town plaza, I would love the specific plan at this level, I don't know if it can, but to say that our town plaza is going to remain open, that we're not going to put any kind of structure, whether it's the Visitors Bureau Historical Society building. I love the idea that they're together, I think that's great, but I don't think that that should be placed in the middle of our town plaza. Town plaza needs to stay open for events, for people to gather, a space, an open space. Trees, absolutely, plant them, that would be great, but keep that space open, please. So I would like to see something put down.
Can I address that real quickly, if I may? We're not proposing any building in the town plaza area, that is an open area, all we're showing is restrooms and the amphitheater in the town plaza, so there's no buildings proposed in that particular median.
At this point, and that's why I didn't know if it was appropriate to talk about it at this point, it's always been, in fact, it's in a lot of the documentation, the structure for the Historical Society and the, and the Visitors Bureau building, and I'm just saying, whatever building, no building, nothing, in that space, leave it completely open. That's it, that's all I'm saying. And if at a later time, maybe that's, to bring that up would be then.
And at, at this point, it is open, there's, there's nothing proposed or shown in that particular area, just the restrooms.
Okay, you've removed all of the buildings to go into another time to, to be talking about that then, correct? Another phase?
No, all the buildings are not a part of another phase, the buildings are a laundry list as, on a separate section, so if somebody wants to build an event barn on Median 2, the standards are there to do that.
Okay.
But right now, there's no buildings other than the restroom shown and proposed by the city or anything else, we've taken them all off. They're there, if somebody wants to do something, and it would have full public review if anything was going to be.
And that's what I'm saying, I'd like it removed.
It, it is.
The one from our town plaza.
It is, there's not, there's nothing shown there other than the restroom building.
The proposed event barn, that is not going to be built at this point, but I'm, I'm suggesting that that could be looked at as a community gathering place as well, similar to the Grange in Los Alamos. I see, that I think that would be a perfect opportunity, both events and the community. Economic development, okay. If we want a unique and quality-oriented downtown, that locals and visitors want to seek out, targeting national chains, and we'll make it happen. Look at, just east of 101 and 246, we have national over there. The policy of the chamber and city council has been to advance Beelton's image of a truck stop in any area USA. Now that's over there, and it's fine, and it serves its purpose for the city, and I understand that. But I would ask that you please do not allow national chains and the same strategy for economic development happen on the Avenue of Flags. It's got to be unique and special, it's got to be different. It's going to be requiring more than what is recommended in chapter 1 and 2, 1 and 5 of refining the target list of retailers, it's going to take more than that. It'll require a different strategy entirely. They have to start to promote, what I would like to see is a promotion of, of supporting local businesses, new and established, and possibly depending on the type of businesses and restaurants and things that you, you hope to have, that we can do regional as well, you know, so I'm not saying that everything has to be unique and individually its own, it's just that national, we've done it, we have it, we don't need any more of it, please. I'd like to see a list of no drive-through, no national chains, no discount or dollar stores. And I'm sure you probably agree with me on the discount dollar stores, I've heard that mentioned a few times, so, but it was on the list, so. And we realize that this part of California is booming, look at Santa Maria, Los Alamos, even our own Valley, you know, their, people are here to build, you know, we, we don't have to go out and beg them to come. We can set the standards for our downtown, and we need to set the standards for our downtown. Our visioning process, the, the statement talks about a unique and distinctive downtown, well, let's do it. And so, so that's, that's what I'm hoping, that we can do with economic development, create something special and unique. Now, as far as grants go, Mark, I did talk to you about possibly the Zaca Creek restoration in the door program?
That is correct.
Okay.
And paying a fee could be used for a variety of things, including creek restoration as well as construction.
Okay. I would like to see the specific plan a little bit stronger on the Zaca Creek, because really truly, it is a treasure, and it's right here in our town, downtown, to the, to the golf course, all the way to the Botanic Gardens, we have a waterway, I mean, it's awesome. And we need to really do more with that, give it a little more emphasis, you know, is there some kind of special program that we can create to, you know, a partnership to make more use of that? Clean it up. I mean, the weeds are, you can't even see anything, even if there was something to see, weeds and trash. So I would really like to see some more power behind clearing up and helping this treasure really, really shine for the city. And I was happy to hear that in Phase 1 is the, the trail system along there, and that's great, because that means that it looks like it's something that's going to move forward quicker rather than, you know, down the road. So anyway, that was it. I did have one other question about grants, though. There's listed eight C and D. It talks about economically distressed regions as, and one of the more, well, and one of the most distressed in the nation, there are two different kind of grants, and I don't think we fall into any of those categories. I mean, I think Beelton was still ranked number one per capita in San Barbara County. I don't think those grants should even be listed as something, unless there's something I don't know, that, that's eight C and D.
We'll, we'll take a look at that, but there are some areas that are, may qualify, I think Public Works Director is working with some federal groups on that, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Kathy?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So I'm Kathy Freeland, of course, with Beelton Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, and my main, my main conversation I want to talk about is the architectural design element for the avenue. I did attend the visioning sessions, pretty much all of them, I did it with the youth as well. Out of a population of about 5,000 people, we had maybe 75 to 100 people, so they weren't highly attended, so I don't know that that's a great representation of what the community wanted and supported. And saying that, I know there was interest in the, in the 50's style, if you will, the nostalgic era, I think we're calling it art modern in the, in the plan, I don't know if we want to think of it as an era, or as, you know, not everything's going to be a diner style, obviously, but I think there's a lot to be said for that unified single design. We do see it in other surrounding communities, we know that's what the draw is in those communities, when it's unique, it's kind of nichey, it kind of goes back to our history here in Beelton, the avenue used to be the 101, and it's a very nostalgic avenue, it's a very nostalgic area for our community and the history that lies there with P. S. Anderson's, and it used to be the gas stations and the motels and whatnot. Definitely needs to be cleaned up, has a lot of potential, I know we have some different designs there now, but that's why we have a plan, hopefully we can get that corrected and work with the groups and developers coming in to try to unify that. I think we're seeing, you know, industrial way, they have a little sign, it doesn't have to be all glowing in neon and silver diner, I'm not asking you for that, but I think there are ways, whether it's in the fonts, or the colors, or the signage, or a neon light here or there, that can really make that area shine and really become a unique identity for Beelton. We've just completed a marketing strategic plan for the Visitors Bureau that we're implementing, but part of it is what is the identity of Beelton, and that, you ask yourself that, and see what you come up with. It's not an easy question to answer right now, and I think we have a last-ditch effort here in Beelton, because the avenue is one of the few places that we haven't developed yet, and I think we have the opportunity to create that identity, that then we can really roll with and embrace it, not only as a community, but in our marketing strategy, to getting our locals to come out and really enjoy and embrace that nostalgic era that we kind of stood for, it's kind of what we were. You know, if you just piecemeal it together with even a few designs, it's just going to look pieced together, there's nothing interesting about it, there's nothing attractive about it, you go to solving, and people are taking pictures of the architecture because it's unique and it's, it's cute, they want to be there. I'm not saying we have to be solving, but there is something to be said for that unique identity, and that we lack, we do lack that, but you have the Menon Hall Museum, you have Balance Pancake House, you have a lot of that nostalgic there as well, Flying Flags has totally embraced it with, with their renovation at the campground, and again, like I said, Industrial Eats has got a little kick of that in their signage over there, too. Also, looking at the millennials, look at the design styles coming back in host furniture now, the millennials are embracing that era in their furnishings. We have the baby boomers who lived in that area, so, you know, picture the avenue to have some of this music playing that kind of takes you back in time, and you want to be there, you want to, you want to congregate there, so I really, I encourage you to just really consider that unique single design. I'm not saying in a boring way by any means, that everything needs to look alike, I think there's a way we can create something out of that era, that Main Street USA kind of feel, that we can really accomplish down there. A lot of the buildings aren't necessarily street-side, where we can maybe have some ability to work with that, and some facades can go on, some of them that are. Let me see what else I have here. Again, I touched on the history, I think that will make it unique. I just really strongly, I think people are embracing it. The Goodlands and Galita, they've embraced the retro. I think it's making a comeback and I think it's perfect timing. You can look at every community in the valley and they all have an identity, whether it's Victorian, Western, Danish. What is Beelton? We're agrarian, we're this, we're kind of hodgepodge. Let's do it now. I think this is a great opportunity for us. So hopefully, we don't miss the opportunity. We can jump on it and I think work with our developers to hopefully embrace that idea. I think it's interesting and maybe they would come knowing that, wow, that's a pretty cool project or I want to be a part of that theme or that idea they got going. So I think it speaks to a lot of age groups. It speaks to a lot of people. It's, I don't know any other opportunity on the Central Coast where a town has this ability to do what we're going through now. So we're pretty fortunate and we are kind of in a boom. We got a lot of interest on Beelton right now. Of course, we see the traffic. But I think it's just anyhow, keep that in mind as you move forward. I think that's kind of all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Kathy, can I ask you a couple of questions, actually?
Yeah, sure.
So one of them being what you just said, you know, the retro look is kind of in and you're noticing that that's a trend. Have you like thought about what it would be like based on our architecture styles that we've got on this list? How it would be side by side?
Right. I do try to think of that. And it's frustrating because it's like, you know, there's a little this and little that. And I think it can be done, even if it's signage on some of the ones that stand now. The apartments sit to the backside of the avenue, so it won't be on the front. So I think that can be hidden or, you know, it can be, that can be worked with. That won't be as noticeable. But I think that some of the buildings do accommodate, you know, that style. It's just a matter of, you know, Oliveras, they can, I mean, it's there now, kind of. I think it's already kind of there in a lot of places. And again, it can just be with signage or a color or font. It doesn't have to be all glass block or all silver diner, you know. But I think we can do it in a classy way and just keep it, but keep it unique to that era. And again, it could be that era. Maybe it's not a certain, I don't know how we word that. You know, I don't know what that would, art modern, I don't know if that's the right term necessarily, maybe for like that era. But anyhow, I think it can go together. We've got enough there to work with now. But I think if we incorporate that, I just think it would be really cool. I think it would just make the town shine and really stand out. And what other town do you go through on the Central Coast that has that theme going? That you can really be like, wow, this is pretty cool. Because that's what's drawing people. Flying Flags is drawing people because of that. You know, Mendenhall Museum, people love it when they discover that. So that's kind of a really good draw right now for, because it is unique and it's different. It kind of brings back a time in your life, a time in history where things did slow down and it was an enjoyable time. And I think we're kind of trying to get back to that a little bit, so.
And the Ellen's Building is kind of like that.
Right.
So it's similar. And if you go again and use the Coca-Cola Building in Santa Maria, next to it are bungalows for the houses. So you have that building and then you have the bungalows next to it. So, you know, that's what they did back in those days, so.
One other question I had, and this is going back to what Peggy was saying, was related to the types of interest.
Okay, I know, sorry.
The types of interest. So you had mentioned there's a lot of interest in the valley of being, you know, heard commerce and everything. You know, are you seeing more interest from a retail, corporate, country, national wide chain? Are you seeing some local interest as well?
A little of both and I totally get where Peggy's coming from on the national chain level. I mean, I don't think any of us go beg for national chains. We understand we have a ton of them. Retail is very difficult now with Amazon and all the online. It's a very difficult sell. When you figure in your leasing and your, you know, your maintenance fees and stuff on a space, I mean, it adds up. And it's like, how many shirts do I have to sell to make that rent and pay my overhead and everything? So retail has totally shifted and changed. So what we're seeing come in a lot of these strip malls and when we go out to the retail shows, a lot of it is restaurants, dining. It's your service industries, your hair salons and nail salons. It's a lot of those things where you're not going to be purchasing online, but you have to go out and purchase. So that's what you're seeing fill up these strip malls now. Fortunately, unfortunately, however you want to look at that, but that's what we're hearing a lot of. Excuse me. But that being said, I think by creating that unique identity and if we can get the people to come downtown to, because it is interesting and we have music playing or whatever it is that draws them there. Then if you can get some shops, I know solving struggles. A lot of the retailers struggle there because people are just kind of looking around and not necessarily shopping or they're getting a little thing here or there. And so it's a very difficult sell. But, you know, we've talked to insurance agents and we've talked to different offices and that type of thing, too, to see if they want to move to Beelton or if they want to open up an office, you know, a credit union, whatever it is. We've been reaching out to these people to see, tell them we have space available. We advertise our available space in our newsletter every month, too. And the commercial realtors try to keep me posted, you know, on what they have available in their units. And we're trying to do our best we can for them and trying to get those people in here. But it's very difficult. Retail is struggling right now, unfortunately, because of online. So hopefully, people still like to go out and touch and feel and that's the thing they got to get back to is, do they want to go try it on or just touch and feel and, you know, be a part of that shopping experience? And that's what you see in malls and things now, too. A lot of people are bringing in more experiential into shopping and that experience because there is an experience now. They can bring their family or their kids. And it's not just shopping store to store, but there's more experiential things going on in the shopping areas, so. It's a tough one. We're in a different era right now with that, so it's a transition.
Makes sense. And what, I don't know about the tenant mix, but the two developers that we have talked with are local developers. They're not out of area developers coming in. They're locals. Don't know the tenant mix yet or what they're proposing other than mixed use. But it is local people that are taking interest in this and the specific plan, so.
Great. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, you're welcome. No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. No other public comments, so let's close the public comments section. Commissioners, any questions, comments, discussion items?
Well, I do remember one of the workshops and that, like Peggy said, Art Deco or whatever was not one of the ones listed, but also like Kathy said, that 75 people were there at most. So I don't know if that represents a good feel for the people. We're just looking at some, you know, the web that you can find anything. And there was some art modern or how do you pronounce it? And I didn't find any of those, you know, bad, you know. There is enough leeway and enough variance that it's not just going to be like Kathy was saying. It's just not going to be glass and stuff. There's a lot of ways to do it. So I would like to see that one kept in, if not be the overriding theme. I'm not sure. Yeah, I would hope to think that, and I agree that we need, I think we need to have a unified, something unified. There's going to be enough existing buildings there. You know, like I think that Peggy points out, the existing architecture there is pretty varied as it is right now. And those buildings are probably going to stay there. So I think we're going to have a hodgepodge anyway, but it'd be nice if the new hodge is all the same. So as for that, and some of the other issues. Well, like I said, I think this traffic is going to be an issue. But if we address it and we keep an open mind, I think that's, you know, the town's growing. But that's the main thing. Whenever I talk to people, it's just traffic, traffic, traffic. And specifically, boy, if we send any more cars down McMurray and 246, I think it's just, it's a nightmare. So that's my comments.
All the rest?
Sure.
Go Joe.
So I'm known not to have any architectural taste or anything. However, from a thematic point of view, I think less choices available is better. And because I don't know which one, I don't particularly care for the 50s look at all. That's just my personal. However, if it was the theme and it was a themed location and it all fit, that seems to make sense to me, just intuitively. So I'm not one to say which one, but I do believe that something along that lines makes sense to me. And I think you got, I'm kind of echoing Dan. So that's just an opinion about that. With regard to the street, I would really love to consider that since we have the elevated crosswalks, that we do away with the stop signs and put the blinking crossing lights and see if that works. That's just an opinion of mine. I like that approach better. I think it's going to slow the traffic down. I mean, I drive through slow, slows four lanes wide or three lanes wide going down the main drag there. Everybody's doing less than 25 because the lights are constantly blinking for people crossing. We're hawking one lane coming off the freeway. I think you're going to get slow enough people, especially if we keep the parking as it is because they're watching out for cars backing up and all that. And I think inherently, we're going to keep traffic moving a little bit. But also, it'll be slow enough that people can stop and see what's going on. So that's, I feel kind of strongly about that. The other thing, I'm still not thrilled with large vehicle parking at the zone one. Not happy with that at all. I think I said that a couple of meetings ago, well, last time we talked about this. Don't like RV parking, don't like truck parking up on the avenue. It's a big thing for me that this is a walking area. And so I think that we need to address that issue again and take a look at it. Ah, let's see, the last thing. Oh, for the vehicle. I think that's all I had.
I don't have anything different from anyone else.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah, going down the list, so I agree with the truck parking. I was surprised to see that still on there. I've got an issue with that as well. I think it just doesn't represent an area. It's going to be a high density area.
So maybe we can focus on that. Is that a consensus of the commission that you'd like the truck RV parking in median one removed from the plan?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We'll make that when you do your motion. We'll make sure we include that, okay?
Okay. You know, one thing I meant to ask earlier when you were, after you gave the presentation was about some of the outreach programs that you guys do with local business. I know we've had some summary of it. I know we talked about it a little bit here, but it doesn't get into the specifics. And related to some of the comments that were made already about architecture and the parking elements and stuff like that, do you have some summary of some of those discussions available right now?
Yeah, we met with business and property owners in different parts of the median as we went through the process. Not many of them had issues with architecture. More was, will I have parking? Will I be able, you know, is this going to make me lose my business and things like that? The specific plan doesn't make any businesses leave. They're all fine. It doesn't address any of that. We listened to the people in the Mother Hubbard's area that they wanted to keep the median in the parking because they felt that was important to them and their business. So that is still in the plan. So those are the types of things that we discussed with them. And I think the Art Deco, Art Modern got a little more traction during the workshops we had with the avenue specific plan than we did with the actual visioning. So I think a little more and that's why it moved forward, you know, into the plan here as we have.
Okay. Yeah, as far as involvement from the local businesses, did you get a lot of participation? Was pretty much everybody involved or was it spotty?
We have.
Not everyone was involved, of course, but there was a pretty good amount. I mean, we had, I think, two or three different segments of.
And the chamber helped to organize them to get them to come out. So we did get a good representation of the people along the avenue, businesses as well as property owners. And they were invited, noticed in all the meetings we have, et cetera, so.
Okay. Okay, good. Yeah, regarding the architecture, I kind of agree a lot with the commissioners. I'm kind of like Joe in regards to, I don't know if the 50s Art Deco style is going to, I don't know how that's going to look. I mean, I know you guys looked up a couple of pictures online and I like the fact that we'll be able to see anything that's coming up. I don't know if there's a way that we can make median, certain medians, certain styles or if that would just be.
Well, we're encouraging districts one, three, four, and six to be the ones with the art modern area.
Yeah.
So not the whole area.
I don't know if we can make a recommendation from, and it sounds like I think we might be aligned here to at least try to focus on one to two at the most, at the absolute most.
And I don't know, especially since a lot of our buildings have been agrarian in style that in the two years that I've served, that's what they come across with. It seems like that's been, at least by definition, that's what they are.
But I don't think there's a lot of agrarian on the avenue.
Right.
There's more bungalow and craftsmen and semi agrarian, but not really like the Crossroad Center. It's just truly agrarian and some of the ones up on Thomas Road. So I'll leave it up to you guys to discuss what you, which of the three, if you want all three, you want one of the three, two of the. I mean, that's your recommendation to the council. This is what staff feels would be appropriate, but it's up to the commission to make the recommendation.
Okay. You know, Mr. Chairman, the interesting thing is, is that the one that stands out that would bring novelty and uniqueness is that art modern because it's quirky. And it's, I mean, I looked it up and I'm looking at these, they're quirky. That's all there is to it. And that's okay. I mean, you've known me for five years now, quirky. But that's, that kind of makes it fun. It might make it interesting. I'm just, this is a suggestion. I don't know.
And I might suggest if you want to, I think the craftsmen bungalow and the art modern might be the two that are more compatible than the agrarian or the others.
I would agree with you, Mark. I just looked up the other style, too. The interesting part is the art modern has all those rounded long edges and that craftsmen one has a little bit sharper and they kind of, I guess, look okay together.
I'd be okay with going down to two. What do you think?
I agree.
You agree with that?
Okay, so craftsmen and art modern is the one and we're limiting the art modern to the certain areas. And again, if something comes through and you don't feel it's an appropriate architecture, you can tell them to do the other styles. So there's still that development plan review process for the commission.
Perfect. Okay.
And then stop sign.
Let's just support for the stop signs. I was going to bring that up again.
Let's, yeah.
Let's talk about some traffic. So I agree with Commissioner Padi over here in regards to minimizing the amount of stop signs. I don't know if it's zero, maybe it's one at the most, at the busiest intersection. But, you know, I agree with minimizing those.
We can put the stop signs as options in the specific plan and put in the crossing light as other options. So we can put those as kind of a laundry list of development.
But like Slow has, I mean, in downtown Santa Barbara on State Street, where they have those fish and crosses.
So we can have those as flexibility. So when projects come in and/or the city moves forward on some improvements, we can have a flexibility to do stop signs, not do so.
And I think that might help the traffic that goes down Central.
Absolutely.
If you're not having to stop every 25 feet.
Exactly. It's the local knowledge thing, too, because the locals will know they can slowly get to Avenue of the Flags versus, I know I'm looking at three stops.
Yeah.
And all that, so it's just not, yeah.
And I like Dan's idea about the monitoring as well. I know we've got a baseline, which is fantastic. And if we can continue to kind of keep track of what the traffic numbers look like.
Yes.
From Central and even on the avenue, that's a good idea. Peggy, you got a question? Come on up.
Thank you, Chair. Second Street absolutely needs a stop sign. I mean, I'm crossing here all the time and it's backed up. If you have one stop sign on the avenue, and I agree, I don't think that you probably need three right away. I absolutely agree. But that Second Street stop sign is absolutely needed. You have an apartment building, 63 apartment buildings, you're going to have other homes going in as mixed use. You have a school. You need to have crosswalks there. You need to have stop signs. So thank you. That's the one. Keep it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, great. Those are my major questions.
And again, that doesn't preclude doing it. It's an option out of all the intersections we're showing. And when the city moves forward, we go through the plans and determine what was appropriate at the different intersections. So it'll be taken into account.
Okay, great.
The other, I mean, just to bring up one other thing regarding local businesses and encouraging that. You could put in a specific plan, a policy to encourage regional or local businesses. Or you can, I mean, it's up to you guys. I'm just throwing that out as an option that could be included in the specific plan.
So we can do that. How would we do that? How would we encourage?
Well, there's different, I mean, encourage is, you know, that's our policy. It's not mandatory. So if something comes in, I mean, the council could, you could put in restrictions like solving does and things like that. But I think the start maybe if you want to encourage locals and maybe they get, I don't know. But you can, we can work out some wording if that's the desire of the commission and then the council can take it from there and decide what they want to do with it.
I absolutely think that's a great idea. I mean, I'd love to encourage you. I just don't know how we'd regulate it. What are your thoughts?
Well, I think pretty much like Kathy was saying, I think the brick and mortar for the large chains, I think it's going to, that's going to stop them themselves from moving in here at a big chain store because it's like you say, it's all done electronically now. I think the, so I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know if we need to say it, but if it's going to help do, then let's put some language in there encouraging. But I don't see a national chain coming here just because their business is dying. You know, you look at all the Sears, all the things that are just shutting down. So, you know, I think quirky little shops and retro diners.
I don't like that so much.
So, I think that, I don't, that's what I can see. I can see a restaurant coming there. Not a chain restaurant, you know. So, but if it helps to encourage local businesses, then it's fine.
Okay.
Do we need to define local?
I don't think we do. I mean, local and...
Or regional. I mean, I mean, that gives it for, we can try to work up something. I can work with Joe Deigus maybe on something. I'm sure he's worked on...
Some creative language?
Something like that before. Yes or no, Joe?
I'm ready to test any profile specifically now.
Okay, all right.
I haven't. I mean, I kind of default position is to be as inclusive as possible to not want to rule out potential businesses that would relocate in our communities that we work in. But as a consultant to you guys, you being our client, we're going to defer a community, you know, objectives as our, as our guidelines. Like I said, it wouldn't be good our job if we didn't say, when you limit the type of businesses that can come into your neighborhood, you could be missing out on something like new sales taxes to the city. Maybe certain developers wouldn't be interested in developing if they knew their preferred tenants would be immediately ruled out. But it's a community decision. And if you wanted to look and feel a certain way, that's the case. There are likely economic implications.
I wonder about things like, like Peggy says, suggestion of the drive-through. I'm not sure that that fits on the avenue.
And I believe it's, it's prohibited in the specific plan except for the community area, the, the travel area, the first district up at the top. I don't believe drive-throughs are permitted and...
Wasn't sure about that either. Because I remember at one point we talked about for the fast food zone and all that. Maybe I was just confused a little bit there. Yeah, if we could double check that.
Well, you can put that in, the, the desire of the commission is...
No drive-throughs.
No drive-throughs. I'm pretty sure it's prohibited in there. If not, it will be recommended to the council if it isn't.
Okay, right.
Okay.
I think I'm bringing that up.
And the, but the Traveler Service District, I think, is allowed. Do you...
Don't recall. We can look at, look at it.
Yeah, well, well...
That's up where the gas station is.
Yeah, up the gas station area and things like that. And I don't see much more going up in that area anyway, other than the proposed gas station that we have in that area. So...
That's District 1?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion? I'd love to make a motion. All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, do I do them together or separately?
Separately.
Okay. That we adopt Resolution 1711, a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending the approval of mitigating negative declaration of 17 MND, MND, number 2, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting the program that Avenue Flag specific plan and making related findings here under with the...
No, not, not on that resolution that you're finding on that.
Perfect. There we go. My move.
I'll second that.
Vice Chair Padilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Heady?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamel?
Aye.
Chair Dunston?
Aye.
Okay. Also like to make motion, Resolution 17-12. I'll just go ahead and knock them out. A resolution of the...
I can fill you up.
Thanks. Resolution of the Planning Commission. City of Beelton recommend approval of Avenue Flag specific plan 17 SP-01 and making the findings and support thereof.
And so, we're going to limit it to Craftsman and Art Modern. Stop signs are just options along with flashing crosswalks. The truck parking at the first meeting is gone and encouraging local and regional businesses.
Language with the no drive-throughs.
And no, and no drive-throughs.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay. Vice Chair Padilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Heady?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamel?
Aye.
Chair Dunston?
Aye.
All right. Very good. Fantastic. Okay. Should we move on? Other business?
None.
None? Written communications?
None, sir.
None? Planning Commissioner comments? I think we've said enough. Planning Director Report?
So, we have new coming in, Andrea.
Let's see. Gosh. We have, I know Morrell's, the new restaurant, the new restaurant coming in on McMurray Road. So, they're just about ready to get their interior ton of improvements approved. So, they should be coming in shortly. And then we are, as you've heard before, working on the environmental documents for both of Gavin Moore's projects on the, on Industrial Way. So, the network and the hub. So, those should be coming to you in the relatively near, near future. And other than that, just making progress on the townhomes and other projects throughout the city, so.
You know, we never saw those apartments come back behind Albertson's. What happened with that?
Those are gone.
Okay.
The person backed out of, of that. And there's other, other people interested in different types of uses that are, are working on that. So...
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that.
I'm glad you want to say that out loud.
And time frame on Bowlin Alley is about 2019 now. So, yes, so we're working through some things. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that. And the Commons is working on, with the Regional Board, there's a little, little stream that previous staff didn't think was a problem. New staff at the Regional Board think is a problem. So, they're having to address it. So, that's why we haven't seen plans in on, on that particular project. Hampton Inn is done. Landscaping's in. They're almost fully occupied. So, there, it's, it's a big hit.
That's wild.
And it's very good architecture. Get a lot of compliments on it from, so the commission in, did a good job on, on getting that one through. And it looks, looks really good and they've worked well with us.
And I was talking to, I just happened to meet the CFO from Marriott. And I was asking him about, well, is your business, you know, how's it affected your business? He goes, for the last two months, we've been at 93% occupancy. Says that's like a couple of rooms on a Sunday night.
There's, I mean, the relationship between the two is not a competition. They, they build on each other. And, and with Hampton not having full food service, Firestone and Marriott are getting the benefits of that because they can walk to it.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I was real surprised when he said that.
And, and the Hampton is, is 25 new jobs. And talked to the developer and over $100,000 went to local contractors for work on the project. Palito Landscaping is doing the work on that. So, he's, they're doing local, because the people are local that, that developed it. So, it's been a good project overall.
Perfect. All right. Nothing else? Thank you, everybody. They said they did.